Good evening. I call the board meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which At this time, I will administer the oath to our newly elected board members. Elizabeth Dietrich, please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member according to the best of my ability. Thank you. And Chris Richter? I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member according to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. As the new year begins with this meeting, we will vote on a president. Do I have a nomination for a president? Do I have a second? Any others? Chris Richter is our only nomination, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Chris, as our new board president. Chris, please stand, and I will administer your oath. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of president according to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, we will elect a vice president as well, any nominations?
Nominate Elizabeth Dahl.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any other nominations? Elizabeth Dahl, you are our only nomination, so all in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations to Liz as vice president, please stand and I'll administer your oath. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president according to the best of my ability. Thank you. Okay, at this time, Mr. Malasani, please stand for the oath of superintendent of schools, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of superintendent of schools according to the best of my abilities.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of superintendent of schools according to the best of my ability.
Very good, thank you.
And now, Mrs. Vooch, I need to have you administer the oath of office to you. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk according to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk according
President, may I? I would just like to thank everybody here who has been here, it's been a privilege to be the board president for the last five years. It's moving forward, I just hope board members realize how precious this opportunity is to be here. Very much, and great pleasure.
All right, and thank you for your service. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Yes, so I, actually later this afternoon, Suvo sent you guys the AHRa periodic review, which is a six-month asbestos review, report, and also we have a resolution to adopt a free reduced lunch price policy. Under personnel, 1115 and 1116, we have an appointment of a career in technical education teacher and appointment of CSE chairperson alternate.
What item number was that?
So it's new business 10-1 and 10-2, they're actually, you actually have the documents where you didn't originally have them, all right, and as personnel is 1115 and 16, and then under changes, under board committees, we will only have one middle school, high school compact committee. In the past, we had a middle school committee and a high school, we will have one, so that's under changes. That's, that's all.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda 1 through 7, the minutes of June 14th meeting, the general fund warrants number 60 and number 62, school lunch fund warrant number 15, capital fund warrant number 8, federal warrant number 12, district treasurer's report from June 2022, and CSE recommendations. May I have a motion? Have a second?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, communications, correspondence?
Yes, in your board packet, you have the middle school, high school honor roll percentages for the last quarter, the last 10 weeks of the school year, 75% of our students grade 6 through 12, three out of four students at Walker Hall has earned that honor roll or high honor roll status, which is outstanding. You have probably 10 or 12 moments of Raider pride in your packet, as well as we have two letters from section 5, one thanking Mr. Reed for going above and beyond in terms of hosting sessional events, and the other letter is to the league, also recognizing all the various events that we have hosted here Calmum for the entire section 5, just a thank you letter from Kathy Hoyt, the section 5 executive director. That's it for communications.
Thank you, and we have no guests of the board tonight, has anybody signed up? We have nobody signed up for public forum. Moving on to our reorganizational appointments. Item 1, resolve that the Board of Education appoint the following officers as listed for a one-year effective immediately. Names also just the headings. It's A through double H, clerk of the board, district treasurer, tax collector, school attorney, insurance advisor, census enumerator, district external auditor, extra classroom activity account auditor, records management, records access officer, Aheer LEA designee, chemical hygiene, Title IX compliance officer, Genesee Valley Healthcare Plan, Section 504 ADA compliance officer, GLSW workers compensation board, internal claims auditor, community education program coordinator, liaison for homeless children and youth, direct district physician, dignity for all coordinator for elementary school, dignity for all coordinator for the middle high school, designee for residency determination, child nutrition program reviewing official, child nutrition program hearing official, child nutrition program verification official, child nutrition program confirming official, educational official, extra classroom activities account, ESSA funded programs coordinator, neglected delinquent transition liaison, foster care student point of contact, migrant student data point contact. Again, can I have a motion for those officers and appointments A through double H? And a second?
Yep.
All in favor? Any, any further discussion, I'm sorry?
This, as the board, you see the highlighted names are people that are new to the position.
All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, item 2, designations, resolve that the Board of Education make the designations as listed for one year effective immediately. This is A through H, official bank depositors, Bank of Castile, Five Star Bank, M&amp;T Bank, a purchasing agent, payroll certification, official bank signatories, regular monthly meetings shall be the second Tuesday of each month to start at 6:00 PM unless otherwise posted, our official newspaper, health insurance coordinator, and school pesticide representative. Can we have a motion for A through H, please? And a second? Discussion, again, the highlighted ones are new. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, authorizations, resolve that the Board of Education endorse the authorizations listed for one year effective immediately, establish petty cash funds, approve budget transfer not to exceed $10,000, approve conferences and workshops, approve field trips per policy including all BOSI's field trips, fund transfer, revenue anticipation notes, sign federal and state documents, payment of approved contractual expenses, hiring other legal counsel as necessary, establish mileage reimbursement at the IRS rate, annual adoption of policy 5410 purchasing, annual adoption of policy 5220 district investments, grants and aid applications. Can I have a motion for A through M? And a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Number 4, impartial hearing officer, resolve that the Board of Education pursuant to the authority in 8 NYCRR, section 200 dot 5, the president of the Board of Education is hereby designated to make the appointment of the impartial hearing officer for any due process special education administrative case filed against or by the district in the absence or unavailability of the board president, the board vice president shall make the appointment. Have a motion for this, please.
Obed.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Number 5, approval of cooperative bidding, resolve that the Board of Education appoint Jeremy Ardoun as business administrator to participate in cooperative bidding for the 2022-2023 year effective on July 1st of 2022. May I have a motion for this, please? And a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, board committees, everyone. Resolve that the Board of Education appoint representatives to the committees for the 2022-2023 school year as follows. We have A through N, elementary compact committee, B and C or combined middle high school compact committee, technology committee, Genesee Valley School Boards rep and alternate, legislative liaison, negotiations, board audit, facilities committee, board policy committee, shared services committee, athletic code committee, Genesee Valley Board President representative, and financial planning committee. We have in backup notes where everybody was assigned last year, do you guys want to go through these one by one? Is there any place where somebody wants to be changed? You want to approve it as we were last year and then find some places for our new board member to fit in? Any suggestions?
Could we please go through the board?
Okay. Elementary compact committee, last year was Joe Geer and Mike Bellanek. Any volunteers for this year? Anybody want to join him? We only need one for each position, so. Okay, middle school, high school compact committee, last year Arnie was middle school and Jamie was high school. Any volunteers for this year? Yes.
Sure.
We can have two, we can have up to three for each committee, so anybody that wants to. Jamie, Liz Dietrich, and Arnie? I like that term, alternate. Okay, technology committee, last year was me and Jamie Fitch. Anybody itching to get on it? Sorry, Michelle.
If you need someone else.
Please. I will, I will stay on it. Jamie, you want off?
Sure.
Okay. Genesee Valley School Boards rep and alternate, it's me and Mr. Bickford, should we switch that to me and Mrs. Dahl? Legislative liaison, last year was Liz Dahl. Anybody like to go with Bob and lobby everybody? All right. Negotiations, Liz Dahl, Jamie Fitch, and Joe Geer, last year. Jamie? Third would be good for that one. Do we have any coming up this year?
We don't have any major contracts, so.
We'll leave it there, Jamie and Mike.
Yeah. It's a good year to be on a committee.
Board, board audit committee, Joe Geer, Mike Bellanek, John Bickford. I will replace Joe on that committee. Facilities committee, I, last year was Liz Dahl, Chris Richter, and Arnie Richlicky. I will back off then. So we had facilities is Liz Dahl, Arnie, and Mike. Board policy committee, Chris Richter, Arnie Richlicky, Mike Bellanek. Liz Dietrich and Arnie. Make sure when you guys meet, you make Bob buy you breakfast. Shared services committee, Arnie Richlicky, Liz Dahl, and Joe Geer. Dietrich, do you want to get on that, or?
I can't. It's awkward. I thought you was going on.
Yeah, I mean, obviously.
Yes.
What would you end up with? Just make sure we have it right.
Dietrich, Jamie.
Do it right now, once. Liz, yeah, you've been on it. So we have Liz Bellanek, or Liz Dahl, Liz Dietrich, and Mike Bellanek? So we are Liz Dietrich, Liz Dahl, and Mike Bellanek. Yes? Okay. Genesee Valley Board President representative, it'd be me, and Liz Dahl as alternate. Financial planning, new committee. We are working on, we're getting back to our long-range planning that was kind of sidelined through COVID, and in that long-range plan, has to do with some financial planning, so we needed a new committee for that.
We, we will be flexible with the board when we need to meet, whatever, meet the boards, whatever times.
Is it just board? It's not community that would be on this committee?
Not this one, the short-term and, and long-term planning. Really designing a financial plan for the future in terms of.
Do you want a fourth, Bob? Or a third, I'll put myself in there.
Sure.
Okay. So can I have a motion for us to make that finalized as we just discussed? And a second? Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, number 7, 7, building use fees, resolve that the Board of Education, per board policy number 3280, establish building use fees at $29.30 per hour for the 2022-2023 school year. I have a motion. Bickford, and a second? Any discussion?
Robert, what was it last year?
It was a dollar eighty left, so 27.50.
Sure, absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
For an increase of a dollar eighty, you said. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Substitute rates, resolve that the Board of Education establish the following rates for substitutes during the 2022-2023 school year as listed for certified sub, uncertified sub, substitute nurse, substitute secretary, attendance clerk, part-time clerk, and other substitute support staff. Have a motion, please? And a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? They are all in shaded, they've, they've gone up, so.
They have.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Communicate, Committee on Special Education, resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approve the recommended membership to the Committee on Special Education for the 2022-2023 school year as follows. Chairperson, Megan Rogers, school psychologist, Abigail Monroe, the child's general education teacher, depends on the child, child's special education teacher, school physician if requested, parent representatives, the parent of the child, and the student with a disability whenever is appropriate or by grade four. Motion, please? And a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number 10, Subcommittee on Special Education, resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approve the recommended membership to the Subcommittee on Special Education for the 2022-2023 school year as follows. Same people, chairperson, school psychologist, the child's general education teacher, the parent of the child, and the student with the disability whenever appropriate and/or by grade four, and at the discretion of the parent or the agency, other individuals who have knowledge or special expertise regarding the child, including related services, personnel as appropriate, such as speech and language therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. Motion, please? And a second? Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number 11, Committee on Preschool Special Education, resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approve the recommended membership to the Committee on Preschool Special Education for the 2022-2023 school year as follows. The chairperson is Megan Rogers, county representative appointed by the county, the general education teacher, the child's special education teacher, a parent representative, the parent of the child, and an early intervention coordinator for those transitioning from early intervention programs and services. Motion, please? Second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number 12, establish standard workday for ERS. Resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent hereby establishes as standard workdays for its employees and will report days' work to New York State and local employees retirement system based on the timekeeping system or the record of activities maintained and submitted by these members to the clerk of this body. Motion, please?
Yep.
And a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number 13, authorization to hire employees pending board approval, whereas the appointment of employees and the approval of volunteers is within the authority of this board, and whereas employee appointments and volunteer approvals generally begin after the date of board action, and whereas there are circumstances in which it is advantageous and proper that employees and volunteers begin prior to the date of board action. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of, the board delegates to the superintendent or designee the authority to appoint employees and to approve volunteers effective on a date prior to board action, provided however that such employees and volunteers are placed on the board agenda for the next following meeting. Motion, please?
Yep.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number 14, authorization for business matters in between board members, in between board meetings, knew it didn't sound right, authorize the superintendent or designee to approve and sign routine and/or time-sensitive contracts that require action between board meetings. Have a motion, please?
Yep.
And a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number 15, authorization for other business office functions in between board meetings. Authorize the superintendent or designee to certify payrolls, make transfers of money between and within functional unit appropriations, to approve conferences for all employees, and to approve applications for grants. Motion, please? And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, old business. Item number one. Item number one, Board of Education Evaluation, continued discussion. We, we, uh, at our last meeting, didn't really table this. We had a very brief discussion because of the time of the meeting, and we decided that we would send out a survey that everybody did end up participating in. The results of that for the six respondents, uh, Joe Gier did not respond because he was leaving the Board, and Mrs. Dietrich did not respond because she was not part of the Board. In that, as you can see, um, it's pretty clear that, um, everybody except one person cited that they wanted something, uh, done with public forum, including reworking the process and refining a better way for the community to communicate concerns. And if you look on the second page, um, that was also, uh, ranked amongst all Board members as the biggest concern. So by that survey, uh, I think that is clearly our, our, uh, priority for this Board going into this next year.
So if that's a, a direction for the Board, I certainly can involve your attorney, Sarah Visengard from Harris Beach, to provide professional development for the Board, give you ideas of best practices for the Board to consider. You have a Board policy that, um, you as a Board can change if you so desire, revise it. Uh, and she can assist you in developing public forum protocols. Is that the wish of the Board? I can do that? Would you like that done at your next meeting, or would you like a work session? Yes?
I like that, uh, suggestion.
Presentation on options, and then a work session, okay? I will set that up, and Sarah?
Um, since number two also has to do with a legal matter, can we just get her input on that? Number two was, uh, find a way to effectively and legally improve communication amongst Board members between meetings in an effort to, um, better organize and run our meetings.
Yes. I would have to check about her availability. I think what they wanted first, so Mr. Bickford, was a presentation on the options, and then do a work session? Uh, your school attorney, Sarah Visengard?
You mean, has, has an additional meeting, or next, at our next meeting?
I think we should do it at the next.
Okay.
I like what you're saying, I think that this matter needs to be.
I, I guess if she's not available for the August ninth meeting, then maybe we, we look at, if she's available in two weeks, then maybe we, John's, uh, idea is maybe Plan B.
Okay. Yeah, in the meantime, I don't, I will provide information, you know, or Sarah. Use me as a conduit to give you information, so you're not getting the information for the first time on the ninth.
I, I like Liz's idea better, I was just trying to.
Is there anybody that, uh, would like to make any other comments about our, uh, Board self-evaluation? All right, we will move on to new business. Uh, the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act, uh, review that you just received.
There was no findings in the last six-month inspection, and you have that before you. Uh, that again was handed out, uh, this afternoon to you.
New business number two, resolution to adopt the free and reduced lunch price policy statement. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approved the free and reduced price policy statement for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, recommended by the Child Nutrition Unit of the New York State Education Program, uh, the New York State Education Department. Motion, please? And a second? Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number three, resolution to approve breakfast and lunch prices. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approved the school breakfast and lunch prices for the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three school year as follows. Breakfast for K through five is a dollar sixty-five. Breakfast for six through twelve is a dollar sixty-five. Lunch, K through five, two dollars and fifty-five cents. Lunch, six through twelve, is two dollars and seventy-five cents. Motion, please? Second? And any discussion?
It's a ten-cent increase in both breakfast and lunch. And as you can see in your backup notes, this year there's, will be no free lunches, uh, unless you qualify. So in this la, past two years, uh, the federal government is, has provided free meals, both breakfast and lunch for everybody. That's no longer the case. So, uh, with the increased prices of labor as well as the food prices, that's the recommendation for an increase in ten cents. Uh, we're going to have to do a very good job of communicating with our school community, because again, they've been used to free lunches. Uh, that'll be coming out here shortly at the beginning of August. And even with that increase of ten cents, we predict, project, if our sales are similar to where we were two years ago, to lose twenty to thirty thousand dollars. So our goal is never to make money on our children, is to break even. If it's similar purchases as we were two or three years ago, uh, we expect to lose between twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Uh, Mr. Nardone will keep me abreast as we go forward throughout the year. We have, you know, basically weekly meetings, but monthly, uh, updates in terms of purchasing and so forth. I will keep the Board well aware. So right now, it is extended through September federally. All right? Yes. Uh, right now, there is a bill in our state senate and house, uh, that New York State would pick up the gap. However, legislature has not acted upon that yet. So they, they come back into session in August, they could, um, but I'm not necessarily optimistic that that's the case. We're hoping the federal government will make the move, and if so, that'll be happening relatively quickly because schools out west and south will start here probably the end of the first week of August or second week, so. There's still hope for that, as you know, we sent letters to our Congressman in support of that.
Yeah, so part of our orientation, uh, when students are new to the school district, every student actually across the district actually gets a free and reduced lunch application in the mail. We send that, but also if you're new to the district and you, that, maybe not here for the early mailings, when you come and register, we give them a packet for them to fill out. Yes. You're welcome.
All in favor of the, uh, resolution? Aye. Any opposed? Number four, new business, review of annual average daily attendance. Per Board Policy seventy-one-ten, the district's annual daily attendance for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year was ninety-five point zero-three percent.
Again, that's, uh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So that's obviously a pretty good number, but that's down a little bit from last year. Last year, we were at ninety-six point six-eight percent. Uh, obviously, I think, uh, was with respect to COVID and the various variants, it was much more contagious, uh, this, this second year than it was the first for at least California Monford. So overall attendance rate is still very, very strong at ninety-five point zero-three percent. And you have in your backup notes where we were for each of the respective buildings from the previous year.
New business number five, setting the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three tax levy. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, set the tax levy for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual school budget at seven million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, one dollar. Motion, please? And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? New business number six, public hearing district-wide safety plan. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, allow for public comment for thirty days regarding the district-wide safety plan for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Motion, please? And a second? And now we will have the presentation. Are we acting on this today? Oh, so that, that was a little.
Highlight, uh, the big picture items, and then upon that, after Board approval, we'll actually have a summary on our website. So this past fall, we came together and we looked at Commissioner's Regulation one fifty-five point one-seven, and we had the various representatives that part of our meeting here, you can see them on your screen. Came together and we looked at, why do we have a safety plan? So basically, obviously, is to prevent, to minimize the effects of serious violent incidents and emergencies. Make sure that we're coordinating with our local and regional resources. We have a comprehensive plan to address prevention, response, and recovery. Uh, we have a link to the district-wide plan protocols for all school buildings. So basically, as the Board approves this district plan, the building will use this as their reference point. And then we also talk about the use of the Incident Command Response System. So with respect to resources, if you have an idea, you know, I think we have a list here about sixteen or seventeen of resources that we use within our region to make sure that, uh, we, we are, are safe, and if should we experience an incident, that we have many resources that will come support our, our students and faculty, staff, and community for that matter. So you can see that, that list before you. With respects to what are we looking at, our acts of violence, so it's implied or, or direct threats of violence, looking at physical confrontations, armed students, you know, in our policy, we dig a little bit deeper, where we have, uh, maybe a weapon that's been brandished, maybe a weapon that's been discharged. It's not just with an armed student, it's many, it's much deeper than that. Suicide threat, hostage situations, kidnapping, abductions, any civil disturbances, sit-ins and things of that nature where they disrupt our operations of our school, bomb threats, missing students and weapons. So with that, in addition to, um, natural, environmental, and weather emergencies, we talk about how do we handle ourselves for severe thunderstorms, tornadoes, earthquakes, hazardous material spills. And obviously, we have hazard material spills with, uh, our local agencies that are, are close by. With respect to system failures, if we have a building structural failure, uh, natural gas leak, any electrical heating issues that we would experience, water or sewage, if it was not working properly, if we had a loss of transportation fleet, how we will handle that. Any, anything dealing with a fire explosion, those are i- issues that are all addressed within our plan. With respect to medical emergencies, we have what we refer to as Code Blue. All right, so Code Blue would be something that is life-threatening, maybe somebody has suffered a heart attack or, uh, a stroke or something of that na, that nature. We also move into medical emergencies where we, if we had to transport a student from a classroom out of the building, we would go into a general, excuse me, we would go into a hold-in place so that there's some privacy for the individual. Um, also, we have obviously AED, public access, uh, access with respect to where their location and procedures in place for that, and the highlighting when the pandemic flew. Although we had a policy for pandemic flu, it was actually designed when the swine flu was around quite a few years ago, as you can imagine, now this is quite extensive, uh, in terms of what our response would be. With respect to transportation, we have it, whereas you have a school bus accident, how we would respond, we have various codes, uh, in terms of what emergency personnel would, uh, support us. If there was a weapon on bus, how do we handle those situations? As well as a driver ed accident, how we would handle all those circumstances are in our emergency plan. In our plan, it talks about the command system, so incident command system. I would be the incident commands, uh, person in charge. Initially, likelihood it would be the building principal, they would inform me of the circumstance, and I would take over. We have our safety officer, which is our school resource officer. Uh, public information officer is, um, is me. Uh, we have arrangements with our village, should it be a large-scale incident, uh, where that would take place, it's all recognized into our plan. Uh, logistic officers with respect to food service, transportation, and school nurses in terms of their roles in a time of emergency. As well as our, the finance aspect of business administrators, if we have any issues, the first thing that usually, other than the well-being of children comes back is in, on insurance and so forth. So those things are all addressed. We do have some protective actions, and really, it's not anything new. I think all of you maybe experienced these, uh, situations when you were in school in terms of protective actions. Obviously, we can cancel school prior to the start, may that be inclement weather or a potential threat. Early dismissal, usually that's been predominantly either, either we have a structural failure or, you know, water, electrical failure, or inclement weather on the way. Lockout, we basically operate in a lockout all the time here in our schools. We only have one point of access once the school day begins. In other words, all of our other doors are locked, the only doors that the people can get into would be the front doors. Hold-in-place is a, a situation where we move the kids into the classroom, they stay in the classroom, the teacher continues to teach, however, uh, there's no movement throughout the building. Lockdown is for, an imminent threat, uh, there's a series of procedures in place to keep the kids and faculty safe, safe. Fire evacuation is something that actually we are looking at currently, we've had some input from faculty and staff. We will be looking at that, uh, throughout the summer, potentially changing some of our fire evacuation practices. Uh, evacuation of our buildings and campus, if we were to evacuate our buildings, maybe go to an onsite shelter or an offsite shelter, those are all in our plan. And then evacuation of non-ambulatory students, we, we have safe refuge areas in all of our buildings. We have people designated, so if somebody were to be in a wheelchair on the second floor, uh, in a time of emergency, they go to the safe refuge area, an adult is assigned to him or her, or to them, depending on how many people are there. And then we have procedures in place, and we work with our fire department and police department to make sure that, that those children will be moved to safety. So with respect to threat assessments, you hear this word often used, uh, there's direct, indirect, veiled, veiled, as well as conditional, so we have a, a procedure in place in ours, where we use Navigate Prepared, which we actually have electronic, uh, documents, so when we go through a threat assessment, you know, even if it was an incident in elementary school, when a youngster, maybe a junior or senior, we would see a, a history there. So we would have, we, we have that, we do that usually in conjunction with other administrators, and, and certainly at least our school resource officer, if not other additional emergency personnel, law enforcement, I should say. So in our appendices, uh, the biggest one, the biggest new ones why it's highlighted is the pandemic, uh, the flu pandemic there in terms of the plan, we have an arrangement with, uh, the administrators, the teachers. We've identified, uh, personnel that are considered, uh, essential. So in a time of emergency, people have already been identified, those that would have to work. Uh, that was an agreement that we put in place this past fall. Other than that, you can see all the appendices that we have in there to support our plan. Any questions do you have? So the plan itself is well over a hundred and fifty pages. This is the district plan. We will be making some changes. Uh, some are due to changes, uh, in the New York State Law, one fifty-five point one-seven, with respect to the number of. of drills and the types of drills. Others are because we're reflective of our practice in trying to make it better and safer for all. Questions? Yes, we've used AED training, or through superintendent conference days, or teachers can sign up to be trained, correct? Lot of our teachers are also coaches, which is great, they need to have that in their, as a credential in order to, to coach as well. We are looking at that currently. We will have a plan in place for the fall, but right now, we are not, it's not been fully determined just yet. In terms of like entry to the building, the beginning of the day, we would definitely need board entrances, but once the day starts, having one point of entrance and a, access, access and, and, and leaving the building, that's what we're looking at currently. Yeah, so actually, daily, several times a day, like with our school resource officer, if they're walking by, they're checking all our exterior doors, our custodians are well-trained in doing that as well. Nothing is, no, nothing that's jumping out at me, yeah. So we have daily checks, our custodians have to, also do it at nighttime, at eleven o'clock when they leave, but during the day, our school resource officers, the building administrators and teachers are always checking doors.
I think to, to answer Jamie's question, though, you said their custodians have a checklist that they are...
They, they have something called a building checklist, but that's predominantly done during the weekends, but during the day itself, at the nighttime, at eleven o'clock, the cleaners that are here, they go, also go through and check doors. During the day, it, it relies on the teachers, administrators, and school resource officer. We, we, Jamie's talking about if a lock goes bad, so we have a couple of doors because they're, they're not used very often, they swell and so forth, so sometimes it, it takes a, you know, a tradesman or one of our custodians to shave the door to make sure that it closes. If it's wet out, the door acts a little differently, maybe you might have a similar situation at home. Typically, that's more for wood, but we have aluminum here, and it seems to be a problem at times. But that's certainly something we can look at, Mr. Fox, Fitch. Anything else? Any other questions? So for the next thirty days, people can comment on this. You'll be taking action in this in September. The board, at the September meeting, you'll, you'll be approving the, the district plan as well as the building plans will come together. And I will keep the board abreast if, if there are recommendations or concerns that come from this school community, to let you know where we're at. Thank you. I failed to mention one thing. We are, we will be conducting a safety and security audit this summer. Tony Olivio out of the Erie One Bosse's, him and his team will come down. We've had a security, safety and security audit done when I first became superintendent. We've made all the recommended changes. We, we felt they were reasonable, and now we're asking them to come back and, and look at our school system a little bit differently. Things, a lot of things have changed since then. So we will have a study done this summer into early fall, and then we'll be making some recommendations to the board, should they require a financial means. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. New business number seven, award of a bid for the capital outlay project. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, award the capital outlay project to the lowest responsible bidder, Billantier Electric. This award would only include the base bid of high school gym, alternate number one middle school gym, and alternate number two high school canopy and vestibule. Can I have a motion, please? And a second? And discussion? How many bidders did, uh, did bid on the... And, and it was pretty clear that... They were low by, but they've done work here before, too.
They had builders on several projects for the district.
So it's a, it's a contractor we're, we're familiar with, and they were lowest by fairly good amount, weren't they? That's okay. They were lowest.
Yes.
Lowest and most responsible, both.
That's correct.
Anything else? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Executive session resolved that the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at seven fifty-six.
Six.
Six fifty-six, to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons, matters leading to the appointment, confidential, student records protected by FERPA, and collective negotiations with the CMAA. Can I have a motion, please?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
You can take your computers with you.
Return from executive session. Personnel is next on the agenda. We will be looking for a motion for one through sixteen as fully set forth in the agenda. Number one, approve annual stipends for board-appointed positions, appointment of food service worker, resignation of food service monitor, approval of compensation agreement, approval of compensation agreement, ratification of collective bargaining agreement with the CMAA, resignation of cleaner, approval of summer cleaners and summer helpers, permanent appointment of district treasurer, permanent appointment of high school secretary, appointment of director of pupil services, resignation of school psychologist, appointment of coaches, approval of bus driver training, appointment of career and technical education teacher, and appointment of CSE chairperson alternate. I have a motion for one through sixteen. And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? May I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Bickford makes a motion for adjournment at eight oh seven. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Everybody have a good night.